Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, August ninth. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meetings. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, this meeting is called to order, and Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Soltis here, Councilmember Porter here, Councilmember Hartsock here, Councilmember Herderhausen present, Councilmember Simomo here, Mayor Pro Tem Smith, Mayor Wagner.
Present.
We have a question.
Thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Smith, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Smith is excused. With that, if everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Next up is approval of the agenda, Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No change.
Thank you, Regan, what's for motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as posted, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The agenda has been approved, we do not have any public communication tonight. So tonight, we have our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization, comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff, and comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting is prohibited. And with that, you have the sign-in sheet. Donnie would like to speak to us. Go ahead and come on up to the podium and just state your name, and if you're a resident of Covington or not.
I'm Donnie Dureno, I'm opening the 17th, I'm going to play for Covington. Well, it's now that I'm here today is the, um, it was one of those noise, the traffic, uh, of the trucks that have been parking is what I call. I don't know if you can see it, it's a little close there. Okay, it was the trash, I call it the traffic sushi parking lot. Uh, there's a whole matter of, uh, tractors, chassis, containers. Uh, if, when you leave here, if you drive by that parking lot, you will see park there for this evening, a truck that, uh, is what I call a parked truck because you can't park alongside the fence because the container is too long. Uh, and we've been having this kind of a problem with this for about two years now. And the, uh, there have been, uh, where they come in and they'll, we've heard the child is on the chassis of the tractors. And they're going to be giving a handout that I made to show pictures and show us the most weight of what these containers and chassis and containers will have. Uh, if they're full loaded, it can be anywhere up to eighty-six thousand pounds, and I don't think the streets are set for that. And, uh, with the people that have been parking there, who basically I believe part worked in the same group of people. But when other tractors see them, then they can stay and park there also. And that's one of my main concerns is the noise problem, and then there's been some kind of a spill that happened in all the way where the trucks parked, and when we look at the handout, you will see a large block stain. It's still there, and I've been there almost three weeks now. Um, so, and that's my concern about them parking there. I don't know what the restrictions are, or if there are any, uh, if there's any arrangements that have been made for these people or the trucking companies. Uh, also, you will find a sticky note when you're, which has on it, a phone number and my contact. I was able to get from Joe at Evan's company and his phone number. Uh, I contacted him twice, he asked me the sentencing, and yet I never heard that from him. When I contacted him, he said that, uh, that pictures were true. Um, we couldn't see what I was trying to tell him. That I have, uh, I don't know if I mentioned he does work for a transportation company for twenty-two years. And with, uh, so I have knowledge of the tractors, the chassis, and containers, and they have rangers on there, and they run the rangers all weekend. That's the noise they do. Uh, when they set their air brakes, it's the noise they do. Um, and I retired two thousand and one of these companies. And when I look out the window of my apartment, I see now right here, I'm. And that's my presentation.
Thank you very much, Donnie, we really appreciate it. Margaret Hardo, welcome.
My name is Margaret Hardo, I'm a resident of Covington, it's two six nine oh two one six nine place, I'll be department five ten. And I would say tonight to say thank you to the city of Covington, especially DC, in some way, um, for facilitating that full night out. One more time, uh, the residents of my apartment building really had a great time. There were more than fifteen attendants, exactly, we're very thankful, this part of the apartment didn't look up over the door and say that that by the next quarter coming to the staffs. But we had a good time sharing pizza and, uh, we're here both with, uh, the chief, with several of the council members, and I want to thank all of you on behalf of our residents as well, and, um, three of our favorite guys from Houston's down fire. We're the, have a really close relationship at Covington Place, uh, City Department with Houston's down fire. They always drive the three of them not coming because they're being called, but coming because they're invited. Um, but, uh, you as council members, uh, uh, gave us good information about things that we asked about. And I know that some of them are, uh, difficult questions to answer, but we really come into the process and also bring some really good issues. We never turn anything down free. So you're welcome to come and give us a good time, uh, either when food or free widgets, and, uh, you can go sit down and have a conversation. So again, I say thank you on behalf of myself and Mary, we hosted it. It was residents directed, and the residents enjoyed it, so please come again and do a, uh, thing, probably. I just wanted to be with us. I'm going to be looking at this agenda when we get ready to start your legislative, planning for your legislation amendment, and we'll be back to talk to you about affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. And, uh, I forgot to say, Donnie, you did a very good job presenting. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council at this time? Being nobody, and is there anybody in the, oh, David in the virtual world would like to address council, David? Welcome, David. We're on mute, but you're, um, welcome to speak.
Let me fix that.
Yep, there you are. Welcome, David.
Hi, hi there, this is David Cottle. I live in Covington at two seven zero one zero two oh six Avenue Southeast. I've been here for over thirty-three years. I, um, very proud of Covington, but right now I say Houston, we have a problem. The problem happens to be with the postal service. The postal service is literally falling behind, and I don't know if it's because of resources, labor, or whatever, but the situation being is that mail is coming probably every three days rather than every day. And I know that because I have the U.S. Postal Service delivery system set up on my mach, on my computer to be able to see what's coming to me. And literally, I see what's coming and it doesn't come. And my neighbors, several of them are elderly and are on heart medications, and I feel strongly that we need to find out what has happened to the U.S. Postal Service in Covington so that it can be resolved quickly, and it is, uh, definitely a situation that really can't, we can't stand by and just let it happen. It needs to be fixed. And I, uh, I have voiced my concern to the postal service. I have received multiple emails from them, I've gone to their national site as well, and they say they're taking care of it, and nothing's taking care of it, like I can tell you, today I got the mail for Saturday, Monday, and today. Today, just a few minutes ago. I just want to make sure I was in, up to date on all that. So I feel that is something that we need to be focused on and be able to fix. And that's all I've got to say, and it's great talking to you.
Thank you, David, and welcome back, it's great to hear from you, and we'll make sure, I don't know if there's much we can do since it is a government agency, but, uh, or federal agency, but we will, uh, look into what we can do.
Thank you much.
You bet, thank you for coming tonight, David. Is there anybody else, um, virtually or in the audience that would like to address council at this time? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand or, um, approach the podium, then we will have a second opportunity for public comment later on tonight. With that, we'll move into approval of the consent agenda, we have item C one through C five. Look for a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is, we have one new business item tonight, and that is to consider appointments to the Economic Development Council. Council, we had one interview tonight, and then we had two back on July twenty-sixth. So we do have three positions, um, and does council wish to take action tonight to make an appointment?
I move. I'm sorry.
Better raise your hands.
Sorry.
Nope, you're good, you're learning.
I move to appoint, uh, Justin Vanland Shoot to, to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council. I think it's Larry Thunderdick.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Justin Ben, Vanland Shoot to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, uh, Justin is maybe one of the best cheerleaders for the city of Covington that we've had in a number of years. Joking during the interview saying that he, someone asked, well, how does he keep his hats so clean, and I said, because he has multiples. He literally replied, yeah, I have three more sitting in the car. I believe he's got one for every day of the week, but he promotes Covington everywhere he goes, he wants to see the city grow, he wants to see the city succeed and bring in new sources or new businesses, help to see them succeed. And looking at the economic priorities of the city, he's like, if we can get two of these completed in the next eighteen months to twenty-four months, that's a giant win, and I agree, that is a giant win, and I think his energy would help to ensure that we could get, get two, maybe even four of those seven economics, the priorities completed. And what else can we say, he was probably promoting Covington when he was on vacation in Europe, so I mean, we might get even more visitors to the city, so that's what we, what we need. Thank you, Bill, David would like to speak for your second.
Well, I agree with everything that Joe said, and, um, Justin just lives and breathes as he, he said, and he is Covington. And, um, I liked some of the more strategic, uh, things that he mentioned tonight, things that we may not have looked at before, but things that I think we should take action on, um, really focusing on the people that work at home and their businesses in their home. And then, um, up, up training, uh, those residents that work in a lower, uh, wage bracket that could train for better paying jobs here in Covington and keeping them here. But Justin, you, you, um, you live and breathe this community, and, um, you could be a great asset to that team.
Thank you, Dan. Is there anybody else who should speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Justin Vanland Shoot to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Justin, congratulations. Does council wish to take any for direction tonight?
I move to appoint Rod Myers, fill a position on Covington Economic Development Council.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Rod Meyer to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Rod's been an active member in this community, uh, he brings an interesting perspective, and I think, uh, he's definitely committed to helping make Covington grow and, uh, in a healthy way.
Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
Rod's active in our community, he wants to see Covington grow, as was said by Beth, but he's also not there just to, to be a yes man, he's going to ask the questions, he's going to find out how we can be more involved, how the, how CEDIS can help everything, everything in the city, not just with economic growth, but how can we help the parks, how can we help with, you know, cleanup, what can we do? And I think he's, he's got the spirit and the energy, and he's, wants to be, be there to make Covington better.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Rod Myers to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Rod. We have one position left, or one opening available, does council wish to take action on that position, Regan? Seeing nobody wish to, uh, take any action, we will, um, look to continue with this, um, at a future agenda. With that, that concludes our new business, so we have, um, looking at our, our next agenda, we do not have a meeting at the end of August, so our next council meeting will begin at six with interviews, and the council meeting is on September thirteenth. Does council have anything they'd like to add to a future agenda? No, all right, then let's move into council staff comments, we'll start with Adam.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, we did, um, another shoplifting emphasis with Marshalls and Home Goods on Saturday. Uh, we had one arrest, and I think we prevented two hundred and twenty-eight dollars in loss. Um, not nearly as big as a Fred Meyer one, but Marshalls is not nearly the biggest store. We've been having a lot of problems with that complex, so, um, we're hoping that this kind of helps out with that. Um, we have some scheduled with Home Depot in the near future, and I've been speaking with Walmart, see if we can get them one as well. So hopefully, by doing that, we can kind of try to limit some of the, uh, loss or businesses. And that's it.
Thanks, Adam. Does council have any questions for Keith? Ethan?
Good evening, council, um, I do have an item, uh, tonight. Uh, the city has been approached by a community group that's advocated for domestic violence awareness and resources here locally, um, previously known as the Domestic Violence Task Force. Uh, this group would like to fund an installation, um, at Covington Community Park in time for uh, a domestic violence awareness event that they are holding, and the city is sponsoring on September twenty-fourth. Um, it is a bit of a tight timeline to approve and also complete the installation that's being proposed. So tonight, I am going to share with you some details of what that installation is, and then if there is consensus among the council for staff to proceed with coordinating this, uh, that would be great. Um, I'll also be able to take any questions you might have. So the installation, um, I'm going to share my screen here, because I think a photo would work a little better than me trying to describe it. Um, the installation would focus on a pathway light pole uh, in between the Margaret Hardo Pavilion and the playground area. The light pole would have a purple vinyl wrap treatment, effectively making the, the light pole purple, um, which is the adopted color of domestic violence awareness, uh, and also has significance with the Purple Light Night uh, event that, um, Covington is known for. Additionally, there'll be some messaging to accompany the purple light pole. Uh, the design is still being worked on, but it's likely to be either a couple plaques or a nice sign. The messaging will recognize and honor Victoria Thromm for her contributions related to domestic violence awareness, and the messaging will also include some resources, um, uh, and, and information such as a website or, or phone number for those that, um, could benefit from having that information. The installation is intended to be permanent. Um, it is, you know, the installation is going to be funded by this other group, uh, not at a cost to the city. Uh, and the conversations we've had is that they would be looking at, um, providing upkeep and future replacement on the vinyl wrap, and signs and plaque, uh, would be their responsibility as well. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission has not had time to review it as a entire commission just because of the timeline that we're up against, but I did brief the Parks and Recreation Commission Chair Laura Morrisey uh, to the proposal, and she shared interest in making sure that the installation and wording and messaging was appropriate for the park setting, uh, and also shared support for the installation. Um, so that's kind of a, um, uh, let's see if I stop sharing my screen, how do I do that? So that is the proposed installation, um, and I guess we're just looking for if council is supportive of staff moving forward with coordinating this in time for that event, uh, or if there's any concerns, we can postpone it, but that'd probably, uh, kind of throw a snag into, um, what the, the group is trying to do with their event, so happy to take any questions.
Does council have any questions, Jennifer?
Hey, Ethan, do, what's the vision for the, the sign from the plaques, not necessarily, not necessarily the content, but will they be attached to the pole, will they be in stakes in the ground, will those be part of the permanent installation?
Yeah, so we're looking at a, a couple options right now, um, I would say one option is kind of two plaques, one honoring Victoria Thromm, and one kind of having more of the domestic violence awareness resource information, um, maybe on, kind of flanking either side of the pole, and they would be on concrete pedestals. Um, you know, uh, not super high, but, uh, high enough not to be a trip hazard right there, so people would be able to see them. Something that would kind of, um, uh, be of the same style as, say, the seat walls and, and other concrete, um, elements that you see at that park, that's kind of option A. Um, another option would be to find some sort of, um, kind of prefabricated, um, plaque post and mount that would be able to be, um, installed there as well. Um, you know, it's pretty, we're probably not going to try to attach anything more to the pole other than the vinyl wrap, just because it's so narrow and just not really, things would have to be so small, um, in text to be mounted on it, that it just wouldn't work.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Debbie?
Hi, Ethan, um, councilmember Porter and I are both on the Covington Rotary, and, uh, it was our understanding that the task force disbanded. And so the Rotary was picking up the, the event for the twenty-fourth, both the tree lighting to coordinate that, and then also the five K. So my question.
You guys may know better than I, that's probably information I should have known, I just knew it wasn't the domestic violence awareness group, because it did disband, I, I couldn't remember if it was Rotary or some, just a group of, of community members.
So the, the community group that's come forward and, and wants to fund this, um, assuming they have the funding for the initial installation, if this group disbands, I don't know who this group is, will they have the funding in the future, um, to, for the upkeep that'll be necessary?
Well, I, I would have to ask, I mean, it, it's, um, Melanie Taylor, I don't know if, if you may know Melanie Taylor, um, she's the, been kind of the point person that I've been talking to, so I don't know how large a group it is or what their plan is in regards to that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? So who's putting on the, um, the tree lighting then, is it the Rotary Club or is it this group that Melanie's doing? Who's? Because it sounds like we have two different groups trying to do the same thing.
They're all working in Covington.
Oh, they are.
Is Melanie working with Rotary is what I'm thinking, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
There's lots of people coming together to do different parts of both events, so she was probably coordinating with you.
Okay. All right. Does council have any other questions?
I do. Do we foresee, is it, the time constraint, is that on the plaques? Or is it just the whole thing, is, is there one thing that's really going to be the most difficult thing to accomplish?
Yeah, I mean, lead times with getting contracts to have concrete work done, or, or even if it's prefabricated concrete pedestals, just ordering them with lead times, plaque time, lead times, all, all the lead times, it, um, in all honesty, it may be even difficult to hit a September twenty-fourth date with anything other than the, the vinyl wrap will be able to happen, for sure. Um, if we don't get the plaques or the, the messaging in place, we'll have something temporary that will work for the event. Uh, we'll be able to install those when we do get them.
Okay, thank you, that's what I won, wondered if it was like an all or nothing, if we can get the pole wrapped.
I think the vinyl wrap is very feasible with the timeframe we have.
Okay, thank you.
Does council have any other question? Is, so you want council consensus to move forward with this, is what you're looking for, Ethan?
Yeah, just to, you know, if there was any concerns, I just want to make sure before we're changing anything at the park, it's going to be viewable, that council got to hear about it. Um, but if everybody's okay, we'll just continue moving forward with it.
Is your consensus to move forward with this?
Can I, can I say one more thing? Is, is it possible for us to see the idea, if it's a, a more visual idea? I'm, I'm in support of this, but I know we do have one council meeting before, at, at least one council meeting before the twenty-fourth. Um, will there be something that we will see before it's complete?
Well, yeah, I mean, September thirteenth would be the next council meeting date, and I think, um, that's why I'm trying to bring it up now, is because I think that would be so hard to try to turn something around with that timeframe.
No, I'm not saying to wait. Would, would there be something more concrete, obviously, right now, it's, it's, a lot of things are in the air, we have questions that cannot be answered. We like the idea, um, but is there something that you can come back with on September thirteenth and say, hey, this is the solid? This is the information we have, I, I would like that, um, can the concrete, um, blocks be made or not? Just keep us updated on it.
Yeah, we can keep you updated, and even in, uh, your weekly updates, if, if there's anything that I can report on, I can pass that on.
Perfect, thank you.
So is there consensus with, um, to move forward with this, just a nod of heads? Okay, you have consensus, Ethan, to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet, any, anything else, okay, thanks, Ethan. Don? Welcome.
Thanks, Mayor and Council, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, just a couple things I wanted to let you know, one is a update on our solid waste, uh, um, request for proposal process. Just that we issued the industry review, um, today, and what that is, is it provides an opportunity for the haulers and others in the industry to provide input on this draft contract prior, but prior to us officially starting the RFP process. So that gives us, um, it kind of encourages feedback from the industry, and it helps us to evaluate if we want to make any of those changes, or if there's any programs we want to evaluate, or things that, that the, um, the haulers and the industry sees in that. So, um, just wanted to let you know that, that that just went out, uh, today. Um, the, the idea being that there's going to be several iterations of the RFP process with the end of the year still being the, uh, goal to have, uh, have those, uh, do the, the final RFP, uh, submittals. So wanted to let you know that, and then our, uh, one other thing is our project out on, uh, Kent Kangley. As many of you have seen, it's well underway, um, there at Jenkins Creek. Um, one of the things that's, uh, we're going to need to do is we're going to actually have to close the pedestrian, um, access across that area, uh, beginning next week. We are providing a detour. We are providing a detour through the Jenkins Creek Park around around behind Home Depot. It is has a, you know, trails and everything all the way across there. We walked that the other day and going to sign that. We're actually handing out flyers this week to all of the pedestrians walking through there. We have noticed it's a regulars usually that go through there, but there's just not enough room now. We're running into challenges of having room to have safely have pedestrians through there. So that will be the case and it will actually be closed until spring of next year for pedestrians. So it is a the the distance between like 185th and Wax Road, I think that's just under right at a half mile or just maybe just under that. And then that detour around is about four tenths of a mile longer on that. So it's not ideal, but we tried to do a lot of things to be able to keep pedestrians going through there. But being the building, the the bridge in half is what we're doing. We're just now to the point where there's no room to do that. So we are getting that information out. Like I said, actually handing out to pedestrians and stuff too through that and and letting them know of that. But I wanted to let council know about that as well. So that's that's all I have tonight. Answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Does council have any questions for Dawn? No, thank you Dawn very much for that update.
Thank you.
Alina.
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. I just want to thank you for your time earlier today walking through the strategic priorities and the objective statements. That was a very great discussion. So I appreciate your time on that. The other thing I just wanted to give you a heads up that I know we've been trying to keep you abreast of what's happening out at Lake Point Urban Village with Toll Brothers. Assuming that property from Oak Point that has officially happened. Regan, Dawn and I met with their team today. Toll actually has a partnership that they're going to be working through with Brookfield Properties. They do, they're basically doing the development of a tally if you're familiar with that. So that's exciting. We're going to start kind of creating that partnership and bringing that underway. We did ask when a good time would be for them to come do a presentation and introduce themselves. We're going to try to aim for an October council meeting for them to have an opportunity to come before you. So they are also still looking for commercial partners. They did express that they would like a local kind of reach like local Washington, did it sound regional? Localized commercial developer. So yeah, things are really starting to move on that and we'll just keep you posted and hopefully you'll get to meet them all in October.
Thank you, Selena. Does council have any questions for Selena? All right, thank you. Regan.
Just two fun items. Covington's Kids Kids Fest is August 13th from 10 to 2 at CCP. And then you should have all received some birthday party invitations in your boxes for Covington's 25th birthday party, which will be on the 26th before our last of the season moving the parks. So that starts at 6:30. We did send these to our legislators as well. And once the primaries are certified next week, we'll send them to the remaining candidates in our district also. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout. That's all.
Thanks, Regan. Mark.
There is no executive session tonight and I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I forgot to ask, does council have any questions for Regan?
I have one for Regan. Who's accepting the birthday gifts on behalf of the city?
I am.
Just checking.
We told people they didn't need to bring this. Yeah.
Is the event starting before the movie like you said?
Yeah, the event starts at 6:30. Movie usually starts 8:30.
All right, thank you, Krista.
Our IT department has our iPads mostly ready. So at our next meeting, we will be able to use iPads to navigate through the agenda packet. I will, I believe, still have the packets printed for that meeting just as a backup. And then I will be asking you if you would like to pass on the paper packets for future meetings. We will also bring back a policy at some point. We'd like to discuss if you want to determine a policy on if you should bring the packet or the the iPads home or just keep them at City Hall. So we'll come back with a policy for that in the future.
Great, thanks Krista. Does council have any questions for Krista? All right. Christina.
I have to say, when we first talked about having pads of some sort, we talked about whether it's going to be an Android system or an i system. And I'm not to upset. I hope there's going to be like a little mini training session because I don't do i products. So I will definitely need my packet printed. I don't mind learning. That's that's always the goal. Thank you for an amazing, amazing strategic priorities meeting. I love how our council and our staff collaborate and how open minded everybody is, but also work together and accomplish things. So it's effective and efficient. Justin, huge congratulations. I could have also raised my hand and say the plethora of experience and knowledge that you bring to the table is really unlike any that I've heard thus far. So I'm so excited. I think Covington will I think you will help propel Covington into just the greatest version of Covington we can potentially have. I'm excited that it's already August, but my goodness, school's around the corner and I don't even want to talk about it yet. But it's been amazing. I know we don't have another council meeting, so see you guys in September.
Thanks Christina.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate our newly appointed or reappointed CEDIS commissioners. Justin's in the audience. Looking forward to continuing collaborating with them. Growing Covington and making it better. And thank you to the audience for coming. It's great to see faces. It's great to have folks speaking and giving public comment and also to the virtual folks that came and spoke as well. It's a group effort by staff, council and our community, so. Looking forward to a few more weeks of summer, hopefully not too hot.
Thanks, Beth. Debbie.
Congratulations to Justin. Looking forward to working with you in more of an official role. And I wanted to say that National Night Out last week was a great opportunity to engage with the the communities. Next year, I hope to get around to more than the the three that I did. So and I think our residents really appreciated us coming out. My favorite one, I have to say, was at Covington Place and meeting some of our seniors. So thank you for for being so open. You guys actually asked more questions than any group that I went to and just were more engaging. It was it was a pleasure to talk to all of you and but more importantly, to see you here tonight to represent your your community and we would like to see more of you at these meetings. It's great to hear your vision of how things are going out there. Thank you to the city staff for everything that you do to keep us informed. I really appreciate that. And Adam for another, congratulations on another great thing, operation.
Thanks, Debbie. Jennifer.
National Night Out was great. A lot, I would say most questions were about Lake Point. I was kind of surprised, but I guess not really. I don't know. I tend to think people we tend, I guess I tend to assume they're going to complain about public safety, traffic, but actually they want to hear about Lake Point. And that was a similar experience to Covington days. The Lake Point diagram is what hooked people in. Meanwhile, I'm trying to get them to take the public safety survey and was doing the same at National Night Out and they were like, but what stores are we getting a target? So the the sooner we have information about Lake Point, the better. So we can push that out and relay that to residents. I also wanted to make a suggestion about signups. Maybe make them 30 minutes so that we can sign up for more slots and hit more. Not that we can't show up, but I I was disappointed to show up at one and there were already two council members there like I I should have gone to another one therefore, right? So if I think the 30 minutes would help people plan a little better and to be able to fit more, if that makes sense. I don't know what the rest of council thinks about that. Right, but then like one of our neighborhoods only got one of us, you know. So I I but other neighborhoods got a few of us. So I think we need to to devise a better way to to spread out. Are you going to say something, Regan?
I was just going to ask if 30 minutes is enough in your experience to be at every place and maybe maybe there's a 45 minute, but also you don't need to be there for the whole hour either.
Right, but that's why I'm saying like then I show up to another one and then there were already two there and then I get an email saying a neighborhood would have liked to have seen more of us, so.
Adam, let's let's look at that, you know, council's comfortable with the 30 to 45 minute time slot kind of thing. You can range like that.
So what you're saying is we should be more like on on top of our times.
I don't want to ever get an email from another neighborhood unhappy with our availability of their event. That is what I'm saying. Yeah, solutions to decrease that input, I'm all for. Any other solutions I'm all for. It doesn't have to be my 30 minute idea. I'm just thinking of ways to 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 help everybody in a more equitable way. And then I just wanted to to say that the the Parks and Rec Department, as always, is just doing an amazing job. My family is having a great time, whether it's the Seahorses or the Adventure Camp. I got great feedback from my kids who worked it and who participated. Also to Curtis, who totally takes my unsolicited feedback and advice with grace when I corner him at events and also the the discussion that we had beforehand with strategy. I really appreciate all of the work that was done beforehand to help corral our ideas. Especially mine starting off right off the bat. I I I feel I still feel like there's a better way for that that first objective, but I really, really appreciate the intentional effort that's put involved into really getting the best product. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I have nothing for National Night Out, which I was sad to have missed it, but my son had a great birthday. So next year I will drag him along with me like I usually do and he will enjoy National Night Out with me next year. So I'm looking forward to that. But I want to say ever since Covington days, when my now six year old son got to dunk me in the dunk tank, all he's wanted to do is go swimming. So that I will say that the dunk tank did its job and I am waiting patiently for our next time we drop swim lessons for young kids. As I was super excited to find out all of the swim lessons between the start of July through mid-December are completely full. And I could not get him in for swim lessons. So that means I take him to the pool at least once a week, throw a life vest on him and teach him to swim a little bit till he gets swim lessons in January. But I am excited to see that our pool is being used again, that it's open for everybody. And that people are enjoying the amenities that we have in the city. It's also really weird to be teaching my six year old son how to swim in the pool. I learned how to swim in at six year old as well. So I find that it's a weird change of events there, but it's it's a fun time. So that's all I have. I'm looking forward to seeing you all in September. Enjoy our little break and have fun sending your kids off to school.
Thanks, Joe. I just have a couple of things. Yeah, Jennifer, I agree. It was disturbing to get that email about National Night Out, but
All right, we're not perfect, but it's an opportunity to
It is. It's an opportunity for so we can look forward to what we can do for that. I visited quite a few neighborhoods that night. It was a whirlwind. It was great. And the topics were Lake Point and then public safety number two. And a lot of discussions about the the Fred Meyer enhancement that you achieved. That was very big topic that we had. So encouraging people to take that public safety, whether they did or not, but a lot of people took that brochure. CEDIS, congratulations, Justin and Rod. It's going to be great having you on there. CEDIS Economic Development Council was great. I enjoyed doing that and experiencing some passion that you and Rod have had. All our candidates had for CEDIS is going to be awesome to see where that goes. Sound Cities is on a break this month, but we will have an executive session on the 24th and on the 31st. As we get updates on executive director search. And they will be bringing back candidates to us on either one of those days. We start reviewing it and now we're going to set up interviews for Sound Cities. Then a topic of concern for me, I'm not sure if council has heard this or even our residents. But the airport group not not C-TAC, but the group that's surveying, looking for a second location for an airport has come narrowed down to two locations, one being the Enham Claw Plateau. Meaning where all the farmland is. And the planes would be flying most likely over Covington. So we've been waiting for a letter that we can review. We've finally received received this letter that we can sign on to. But it's an in-depth letter that it's not fair to council to try and review it tonight. So we want to bring it back. They're trying to, they would like to have it back the first week of September. We don't meet until the second week of September. So we can either put it on the agenda for our council meeting or we can hold a special meeting to discuss this. Either way, I feel that council should look at this and respond. Whether negatively or positively, look on adding our name to the letter. That's how we choose. So does council want to have a special meeting, which would be the week of Labor Day, Tuesday or Wednesday? Or we wait till the following week. Maple Valley is waiting until the 12th, I believe. Which is after Enham Claw would like, Enham Claw and Auburn would like the letter back, I believe, the 8th or 9th of September. And we're not meeting until the 13th. So we told them that. So I'm not sure if we wait till the 13th, if it's going to make a difference since Maple Valley is not going to be until the 12th. Did I miss anything, Regan? I've been having discussions meeting with Jan Molinaro, the mayor of Enham Claw and other mayors, and it's not this, the direction was not to locate this airport in Keene County, yet they're coming back pushing that location. And that takes up valuable farmland, valuable resources and stuff. And it's going to be a commercial airport.
I think it's an extremely important topic and Sean and I were both having a conversation with with Mayor Molinaro at the SEA event. I think we need to make sure that we get, if we can help better the cause by having a meeting beforehand to get that sign off on that letter for them. I'm all for having a special meeting to discuss it. At a time that works for everybody, whether that's regular or Tuesday, whatever.
I I looking at the sixth or the seventh of September, which is Tuesday, I would say right after Labor Day, I'm good with that, even if it may, I mean, I'm even good if we have to meet the week before. I don't know if everyone else is, but I I am. So I just, can we get a copy of the letter emailed to us?
Yeah, yeah, we just got it this this evening. So what we can do is just send out, we'll have Krista work on scheduling. It sounds like there's agreement to do a special meeting.
Yes.
And so we'll just get that scheduled before September 9th.
I'll agree. I can't do Tuesday, it's Monday, Tuesday, but I can do Thursday.
And I can't do the week before. Joe suggested that I I will likely be gone a couple days for you.
All right, so Krista, do your magic. That you always do.
Beautiful, adorable.
Yep. With that, I have no other comments that I can remember. With that, we'll move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience? Yes. Donnie? Yes, please. On down. Or come on up.
Um, I just wanted to add what I had to say before that if there's any other information that we use that you can, I can provide. Or get from you, I would be happy to do that. And also, when something comes up, I'd like to be notified of. What's going on with the project. Thank you very much for listening to me.
You bet, thank you. Anybody else in the audience wishing good rest? Yes. Regan, welcome.
I have plenty of space, so forgive me if I'm. I wanted to put Dom and her issue. Um, we both face south on our building. I'm on the fifth floor and she's on the third, I'm a little higher up. Oh, we have a beautiful view in our area. I'm next to south, but I don't see the cars directly, but I hear them. I can't have my windows open in the summer because the air brakes started to bother me. And that disturbed me by for a while. The other thing I noticed. One point, you know, down on my deck is a truck's horn honking. And some other public had parked against the fence. And they were honking, let them move to the department cluster. Now, I'm concerned about that because I think that's a public place and I'm not sure these trucks have high commission. From anybody who parked there. And it's felt weird. Also. Uh, the road out here that circles around, go to our building is very narrow. If you can navigate that, you try and pass too far. Well, those big long semis come around that corner. And then turn again to go around to go in. I bring clothes and that maneuvering is ruined, curbing, piloting the roads. A lot of things affect the community. So that's, that's about it, anything for Dom.
Thank you, Regan. Anybody else wish to address council? Is there anybody online wishing to address council? All right, seeing that, I do have one other announcement I remembered is on um. August twentieth would normally be our cider fest, but the Covington Chamber Commerce. Is holding the second Covington Makers Market. And it'll be held out at Covington. Um, community park in the uh, I think, believe around the soccer fields. So that is on the twentieth, so on the thirteenth Kids Fest, twentieth is. Makers Market and then the twenty sixth is the birthday party, that's Friday night. And with that, the council meeting is adjourned and we will see you back in September. Everybody have a wonderful rest of your summer.